Chairman, thank you colleague. That brings up a really good point about having a business license. And I too have a business license as well. And I'm sure there's others here in our, with my colleagues that may have a business license too. And if they don't, maybe we'll get one in the near future. But I also want to have us consider that, for example, in our Guam code annotated, Chapter Four, Subsection Fifteen, Two Oh Five Eight, when we look at trying to, for myself, recusing myself if I wish to do so, which I don't, but it says I should if it prohibits taking official action directly affecting an employee's business. Mr. Chairman, this does, the action that we're voting on or will take a vote on or the bill that we're discussing does not directly affect my business. It also says, or other undertaking in which the employee has a financial interest. Again, Mr. Chairman, this will not affect my final interest in my decision of holding a business license, that we shouldn't move forward with this bill. So, Mr. Chairman, I object for the recusal of, for having a business license. I have a business license and I will like to proceed with this discussion on Bill Number One, so I object to the motion to withdraw based on having a business license. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleague.
Thank you, Senator Moilen. Does any other colleague would like to speak? Senator Tello, ma'am?
Please, just, Mr. Chairman, just for transparency, I as well have a business license. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, I would like to disclose on the record that I also hold a business license for my law practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Speaker.
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, based on my testimony, that I did disclose that my family member did have a business license, so that includes me as a, as a first degree of consanguinity. We're both on the license too, so.
Thank you. Does any, Senator Nelson, I mean Senator Duñez.
Mr. Chairman, much like the other members, full disclosure, I am a business license holder.
Thank you. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for disclosure as well. I do, I don't personally have a business license under my name, but as part of the company corporation that I'm a part of.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Does anyone else like to make that, any other declaration? Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is matter of full disclosure, I also to have a license.
Thank you. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I also like to disclose I do have a business license as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Senator Clinton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do not have a business license.
Thank you, Senator Clinton, I don't have a business license, but my brother does. Anyone else would like to disclose, just so that it's for the record? Senator Amanda?
I have immediate family members with the business license.
Thank you. Anyone, I see no one else that would like to make any statement? Being that there is an objection to the request for recusal of Senator Nelson, I would ask for the vote for her recusal. All in favor of recusing Senator Nelson from voting? Or any further discussion on this Bill One? Please raise your hand, please. Thank you, your recusal is denied, Senator Nelson. Does anyone else would want to make a motion? Otherwise, we're going to move to the amendments. There being none, we will start with the amendments. And if I'm correct, there is one amendment, I think that's Senator Perez, ma'am? You're withdrawing that? My colleagues, there's no other amendments? Oh, Senator, Madam Speaker.
I would just like to speak on the bill, Mr. Chair.
All right, please. We'll start with you and if anybody else wants, and then the Vice Speaker will close. Thank you.
All right. This bill waives business license fees. It, from its face, it covers all businesses, not just small businesses affected by the public health emergency. It does not have a cap or require that these waivers only be granted to businesses of a certain threshold. The bill as introduced is the blanket waiver for all businesses and all fees under business licenses, including renewal and late fees. The Department of Revenue and Taxation fee schedule is based on businesses, some of the fees are based on annual income thresholds, and the fees seem to range from, as the director said, ten dollars to a hundred dollars for the most part. There are a few exceptions that are over two hundred dollars and some that are a thousand dollars. And most of those that are over a hundred dollars are, are based on income of the companies. For example, a wholesale license begins at a hundred dollars for corporations making less than a hundred thousand, but anyone over that amount, it's a scale for the business license fee. And up to, the most you're going to pay is a thousand dollars, and that's if your business exceeds two million dollars. So, when I looked at these, I found these fees to be very reasonable. Actually, they're not exorbitant licensing fees on Guam that we have. There have been efforts in the past couple of years to give relief to certain small businesses. For example, in 2019, the legislature passed the limited exemption for certain small businesses making more than fifty, but less than two hundred and fifty thousand annually to pay only three percent for the first a hundred thousand dollars, rather than the current rate of five percent. And this was effective in January 2020. In June 2020, as a response to the pandemic, the legislature passed a limited exemption for small businesses making more than fifty thousand but less than five hundred thousand annually to pay only three percent for the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This was effective January 2020. So, these businesses have been getting some relief from the gross receipts tax. We were told by the Department of Revenue and Taxation that actually ninety percent of businesses who are GRT filers fall below the five hundred thousand dollar threshold and qualify for expanded Dave Santes exemptions, which tax only the three percent of the first two hundred and fifty thousand instead of the five percent. That's ninety percent, Mr. Chair, of the businesses on Guam qualify for these exemptions. The Director of Revenue and Taxation also testified at the hearing that she had already extended renewal of payments or waived late fees for businesses who had requested consideration. And they've offered temporary economic assistance through the BPT deferral program beginning in March twenty. And now that program has ended, but they did offer some initial relief. Businesses have availed of the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP loans by the U.S. Small Business Administration, which also offered loan forgiveness. In June 2020, according to a PNC article, the congressman, our congressman stated that over seventy percent of small businesses of Guam have received over three hundred million dollars. That, that's seventy percent of small businesses. The SBA Office of Advocacy reported that there are three thousand four hundred ninety-three small establishments on Guam, and that of that amount, two thousand four hundred thirty-three had received loans as of May. Reports indicate that additional stimulus will be made available to Guam businesses shortly from Congress. And I support, of course, our congressman and our governor's efforts in this regard. They, the stimulus includes twenty-five point six million for rental assistance, thirteen point two million for mortgage relief, restaurant revitalization funds, I'm not sure the amount of that, Mr. Chair. And the governor has announced, according to media, that she is looking at grants for small businesses and all options to bring back jobs, and that she's looking at that for use of this money. And so I support that as well, Mr. Chair. So while the pandemic certainly displaced thousands of workers, it has also opened the door for thousands of entrepreneurs looking to start a business. And as reported in the Guam Daily Post, the number of new business licenses issued was more than double the number of business licenses canceled in fiscal year 2020 when the pandemic hit. The cost of business license, I think, from this data, we can guess that it's not clearly an impediment to the starting of new businesses or the continuation of the businesses. For the record, I think The Economist and, and Revenue and Taxation says that we really won't know the true impact yet because the data was early. The governor recently submitted her budget request for fiscal year 2022, and the government is looking at twenty-nine million dollar reduction in revenues, reduction in spending for services. Twenty-nine million dollars. That's in addition to, I think it was sixty-two or sixty-four million that we cut in the 2021 budget, Mr. Chair. Several of our essential government of Guam agencies, including health, education, and public safety, will be seeing a budget cut or, in the governor's proposal. BBMR noted that based on the general fund revenue collections in FY20, two point five million was generated from business licenses. So GovGuam may see a loss of approximately five million in revenue for FY21 and 22 from this bill. They also noted that the waiving of business license fees will further exacerbate the government's revenue shortfall. Per November CRE report, the business, the BPT collections were short seven point six That's for the first quarter of FY21. That's short from our proposal. So in addition to the sixty million that we cut, our revenues are also short even more, seven million at that point, Mr. Chair. So, I am aware that this pandemic has impacted some of our island's small businesses, of course, greatly impacted. Restaurants, stores, other businesses that have been around for years, we've seen them close as a result of the pandemic. And I understand we want to give support to small businesses. I would like to see additional relief. However, this bill in its current form is broad, and it doesn't limit the relief to those who may need it the most because of the pandemic. And I'd like to target our assistance towards those individuals and small businesses who have been impacted the most. We, the Department of Revenue and Taxation has testified that this bill may impact their department, not the entire five million in their department, but at least two hundred and fifty thousand in their department per year, and that that impact alone may reduce their ability to promptly process tax refunds. And that's one thing I want to commend the Department of Revenue and Taxation on, is that they have been processing tax refunds. The payment of it is another question, but the processing of it, if you read the, the income tax reports that they put out regularly, they are clearly being diligent about processing these refunds. We have many refunds processed, ready, waiting for payment. And so I don't want to stop those efforts or deter those efforts or slow those efforts in any way, Mr. Chair. I don't want to impede the Department of Revenue and Taxation's efforts to, to be our enforcement arm when it comes to tax collections, business licenses, especially now that there are additional guidelines that businesses have to follow, and we are looking to only two agencies to police this. That is Revenue and Taxation and the Department of Public Health. So we need them. We need them for safety, and we need them to do all their regulatory functions, and I just do not want to impact the Department of Revenue and Taxation receipt of these fees, Mr. Chair. And that, that is my concern with the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does any other colleague would like to speak? Senator Moilen, you would like to speak, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, my colleagues, for the discussion on this bill. And I also like to give my version of how I feel about this bill too, and I support Bill One Thirty-Six, Mr. Chairman. And this measure continues on with a series of bills which I've introduced since the start of this term, and, and with the objective of helping the small businesses. You know, in particular, in providing them with some additional relief. We're going through a rigid economic recovery phase. And I, you know, I do understand the Department of Revenue and Taxation, I heard the situation from the director, and has concerns of the potential impact, Mr. Chair, on this measure would have on their revenue stream, in addition to that cost of two hundred and fifty thousand that they had mentioned. And it's interesting that, you know, this was a similar concern they, they had in 2020 when we discussed reducing the filing fee of LLCs. The intent then, and as it is right now, Mr. Chair, is that the small investment provides greater opportunities in the future. You know, and the recent media reports stated that over a thousand businesses, they were canceled last year, and basically these were entities that said it's, it's, it's over. You know, imagine if this measure was in place then, Mr. Chair, and how many of these entities would have held on to the renewal license with the thought process, then in the very near future, I would get my doors open once again. And that I can bring, I will be bringing back employees back, back to work, or purchasing needed supplies from local entities, and better yet, that, that they will be paying taxes once again. We discussed our, our revenue for, for the government of Guam, and we know BBT is down and payroll tax is down, and that's our two biggest income revenue for the government of Guam going into the general fund. But these, these small businesses are the ones that will be paying those taxes once again. These are the potentials that we need to be looking at. So once again, Mr. Chair, I, I get it, we need to assure DRT has the resources to function effectively, yes. And there are talks nationally, we know all these, it sounds really good for us, that a new relief package would provide governments the opportunity to expand some of those funds into their operations, and that, we need that. And that's something we should look at. Now, I've, I have proposed some measures which also provide some opportunities to reduce costs, which we can provide DRT the additional support from. In other words, we can find the needed funds to offset the concern of the agency. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I rise in support of this measure because any support for a small business would be much welcome during these times of uncertainty. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Senator Moilen. I believe there are no other amendments, and does anyone like to speak? Other than that, I'm going to have the author, the author of the bill to close.
Thank you.
And then I will entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole. Madam Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Manana Sizos. Good morning to everybody, and, and before I just do my very, very brief, uh, closing, I'd like to add Senator Jim Moilen to the measure, if I may. Senator Jim Moilen, to be added as a co-sponsor.
Are there any objection to, is anybody else you're going to add today?
Nobody else has.
Okay.
Spoke.
If there are no objection?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I, I know that this bill is broad because of the impacts, because I believe the impacts of COVID-19 are broad, and every business is impacted, and I believe every business needs help. And as my colleagues rightfully noted, BBT collections may be down, our projections may be off, but that has been the reality for nearly every budget I have been on the floor to pass, and that is why cash management, at least for me, exists. And if, if Magahaga believes that cash must be prioritized for DRT, then I think DRT can get every dime authorized. And I just want to say that in this effort, I just want to support every business in general, and that is the hope that, it is the hope that my colleagues would see that same vision and help me support this effort. It's not for a long time. There is a sunset provision, and it will end, it's only for a couple of years. So I'm hoping that our, that I would receive support for this effort. So with that being said, I'd like at this time to move to place it to the third reading, but I guess I would have to add, Mr. Chair, that, do I do the motion to rise at this time?
Yes, motion to rise.
I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill Number One Dash Thirty-Six LS be placed in the third reading, as?
As amended?
As amended.
Is there any, I don't think there was?
Was it as amended?
Any amendments?
Yeah.
Oh, you added the co-sponsors?
Yeah, yeah, as amended. Yes, you are right.
All right, thank you. On the motion that, that we rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation to place on third reading file, are there any objection? There being none, we are on recess at this time. There being none, we are on recess at this time.
We're back from recess. Do you have another point of order?
Yes, well, not Madam Speaker, but I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask Legal regarding Resolution 19 that was proffered by the Republicans or the minority leadership on the standing rules to bring some parity to this legislature body.
Senator, the motion to refer is not debatable, so
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I object.
All right. Okay, so on the motion to refer Resolution 19-36 to the Committee on Rules, on Senator Rigel's motion, is there any objection? Oh, there's an objection. Sorry. All those in favor, please raise your hand of referring the resolution to the Committee on Rules. And me. Motion carries. We're still in motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sijilus Massey, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that we recess until Monday for voting at 3:00 PM, 1500 hours.
On the motion to recess until Monday at 3:00, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, we are recessed until Monday at 3:00 PM.